Is anyone wanting to read the meeting announcement?
No, sir.
No, thank you.
First item on the agenda is general public comments. Any matters, any comments on matters that are not on the agenda?
Good evening, Council. My name is Andrea Gallagher. I am, I live on South High Street and I walk up and down South High Street coming to downtown a couple, two, three times a week. And I'm always saddened because the two blocks right before the bridge are dead, lifeless, kind of empty concrete areas. I was really excited when I heard that the empty office building that used to be the Board of Education was going to be a school, right? Something that would bring kids and livelihood and activity to the area. I know that this isn't on the agenda for this month. I hear it's going to be on the agenda for next month. And I just wanted to let you know that I, my perspective and my perspective as a resident, that I would like to see this allowed to go through. It's something that our neighborhood needs to, and something that that whole area really is going to benefit from. So, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is meetings from, or minutes from the April 11th, 2024 meeting.
Mr. President, on item B, that will also include study session agenda from May 30th, 2024.
On item B, okay, that's fine. So, any comments about the April 11th, 2024 meeting minutes?
Move to a second.
A motion of a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I am staying because I was not here. Next item is the minutes from the May 9th, 2024 meeting plus the May 30th study session.
Are we allowed to vote on it if it's not listed on our agenda? I don't think we can vote on it if it's not listed on our agenda.
On the new agenda or the?
It's not on the new agenda. Don't even, don't want to say it, I'm sorry.
Really no minutes anyway.
I don't see anything here.
I mean, it's just a list of what we discussed.
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only part of it that needs to be included.
Or just the agenda?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's a way to document that we had a meeting even though there were no minutes taken and no minutes are required in the planning commission.
Any discussion?
Make a message.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion of a second, all in favor?
Is this for May 9th or for both of them?
Ah, let's, let's do this. Let's do the main one. Let's do May 9th.
Okay.
Because I'll have a question about the May 30th. Let's do, let's just do May 9th. Was the motion for May 9th?
Yes.
Okay. A second for May 9th?
Yes.
Okay. So, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
I am staying because I wasn't here.
So, for the May 30th, as I'm looking at it, it's just the agenda. There was nothing taken in. I assume that the agenda was part of the record anyway because it was published, yes?
Yes, but typically the way it was given to handle in the past is it's associated with the minutes from the previous meeting.
Great.
But yes, it was given notice posted, so I don't think any actions taken on it, I think we'll be okay, it's part of the record.
Okay. I agree. Great, yeah.
Okay, alright. I'll tell you this, it's not on the agenda, so what I think is we'll just leave it if you want it on the agenda. We'll put it on the agenda for next month. How about that? New business, MAP 24-9117, Abdul Taravishi, 1433 Dorsey Avenue.
Mr. President, so just to go over a couple things, you have a copy of the slide deck here. You have the exhibit for the proposed zoning amendment for the bottom now. For some reason, when we were printing additional packets today and needed a copy, we have the, the team noticed that item B was not included with the agenda item for together zoning amendment along University Avenue. So, that's included in your packet here as well as the exhibit for that proposed map amendment. And then lastly, is an updated survey and a flat for the minor subdivision items seen on our agenda. So, just wanted to make sure you're aware of all of items that are in your packet and in the record. So, the above reference property encompasses 0.89 acres of land at the intersection of Dorsey Avenue, Lucky Lane, City Corner Town. Situated on the property is a brick building and surface parking lot with approximately 14 striped parking spaces. According to Google Earth, the property was recently used as an administrative office building by the Mongeia County School District. More specifically, the property was owned by the Dorsey Center Mongeia County School Office of Federal Programs. In 2023, the applicant purchased 1433 Dorsey Avenue from the school district and in so doing, desired to make the property available to commercial tenants. And as such, the applicant is now seeking a map amendment to rezone the property from R1 to a B1 neighborhood business district. And the map, the map on screen shows the location of the property as well as the surrounding zoning and note that anything that's not shaded on that map is not located in the corporation limits of the city. In terms of analysis, the parcel land to be rezoned is currently in R1 district and according to staff, the parcels adjacent to it which are now zone R2 or previously zone B1. And prior to that, when they annexed into the city in January 6th of 1998, they were initially brought in as a B1 zoning district. In terms of the 2023 comprehensive plan, well, before I get down, I'll show some pictures of the site for reference. Those are also in your packet and in the slide deck. This is looking from Dorsey Avenue, the old school building. This is looking at Dorsey Avenue on the right-hand side, towards Lucky Lane, from Greenback Road. And then this is looking at the intersection of Lucky Lane and Dorsey where the church is located also at that intersection. In terms of the comprehensive plan, the city's future land use map identifies the area bounded by Lucky Lane to the north, Greenback Road to the south, and Dorsey Avenue to the west as a corridor mixed use. And you can kind of see the red circled area there and the little, you know, purple slipper. That is what's identified as corridor mixed use. In terms of that, potential future land use map development technology generally appropriate include multi-family, civic institutional, commercial office, and open space. And in the 2023, and the 2033 plan identifies 11 key land management principles to consider when looking at the domino zoning applications. And in this case, numbers five, six, and seven all appear to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the proposed rezoning of this property. Staff would also further note that the applicant applied earlier this, or at the end of 2023 to rezone the property to a B2 while the planning commission found the request to be consistent with the comp plan. In January 2024, the applicant's petition was denied by Oregon County City Council on March 19th of 2024. Hence, the application for a new zoning designation coming back before the planning commission, obviously not the same, but looking at a different zoning designation. And that will conclude my comment.
Okay, now, pick a.
As mentioned in detail with Mr. Agar's report, we did present this on, before and in past, you know, the planning commission, you know, six to one, I think the, on the, and even in the first city council reading was, you know, was passed, the second council reading, I just, it was short one voice, so. Unfortunately, I wasn't there because to, to kind of like, you know, to be the concern that, you know, that this, I think the concern is brought up as if, if, you know, I'd be like B2 like my neighbors. I thought being B2 with my neighbors would be more consistent with the plan, you know, with the, with the zoning, so we don't have any spot zoning. But I guess, I wasn't there to, to, to tell the, you know, the city council that it's actually still, we're not going to demolish or change or change anything in the building. It just basically means if it's a B1 or a B2 regardless, we'd be able to be, be used as a daycare, not like me or my father be running it where we, you know, leasing it out. That's, that's the plan for it to be used as a, as a daycare or a school. We did go in front of like, as part of the R1 designation, can go also for a school. We did go with the board zoning appeals and successfully raised to be used as a school. Although, as we know, it's a very small property to use as a full school. Just from one of the nearby schools that's outside the city limit that they, they want to take the property, but they didn't follow through, so I'm trying to make sure that we have available for. And the residential side, you're limited by, I think, only to, up to six students to be, or six, you know, is it called, daycare. It cannot go up to the, to the, you know, something that's functional for this building which is going to, you know, which can be either B1 or B2. So, we chose to go with B1 just because we think the city councils probably would, hoping would endorse that, you know, consideration. But we're not planning to demolish, we're not planning to purchase the nearby properties, we're not planning to do any, anything, nothing major, only like to be used as school, daycare, or whether it's a lot of the, and the B1, but most likely these are the two contenders, both a school or daycare.
Anybody have any questions for the? Do you? Okay. Okay, anybody have any questions for the planner?
I have one question for staff. Ricky, is there analysis for spot zoning and for this particular application, whether having a B1 zoning would constitute spot zoning?
Yeah, we spoke with our legal team and when you look at the comprehensive plan, it can be a gradation in terms of, you know, while this may be a different color from what's immediately in the mid, in the immediate vicinity, as long as it's considered part of the comprehensive plan and the future land use map and it's consistent, then necessarily we consider spot zoning. The other thing to point out is that across Greenback Road, that is already the own B1 and the properties that are adjacent to the petitioner's property were initially done in B1 before they were rezoned in B2.
Wonderful, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, any member of the audience that likes to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Okay, staff recommendation, please.
After review, staff finds the proposed zoning amendment to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan with respect to land management plan set forth in the documents. Note that the existing structure will demolish and/or redevelop in the future, said development would be subject to plan review and the development standards associated with the B1 district as well as the development standards outlined in section nine of the city's planning code. That concludes staff's recommendation.
Any discussion?
I just want to point out that despite comments made, we are not supposed to look at zoning based on what the current owner is doing, but what the potential would be for that land use in the future. So, despite this property owner saying, I don't intend to combine with another parcel or I don't intend to take this property down and rebuild, zoning has to think about what it could be in the future.
Any other discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion, have a motion? Is your motion to forward a city council recommendation that they change the zoning?
Correct.
Okay. And that's the second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? You want to put it? Okay, the next item is MAP 24-124 Metro Towers LLC.
The above referenced parcels in your packet are contiguous and encompass approximately 9.2 acres of land generally located north of Beverly, south of Evans, and west of University Ave, Avenue and Seymour Alley. The property is currently home to several vacant apartments of land as well as five multi-family apartment buildings, all of which are owned and operated by Metro Towers LLC. The applicant desires to construct new townhouses on some of the vacant portions of land in the future. This includes property recently subdivided into vacant Metro Towers in a plan, in a case that was approved by Planning Commission MNS 23-08. As such, the applicant seeks to rezone above reference parcels from an OI office and institutional district to an R3 residential district. On the screen, you can see the extent of the petition to rezone and as you can see, this is the exhibit and then the surrounding zoning designation. In terms of the 2023 comprehensive plan update, the land manager plan identifying the above referenced parcels are having a pattern and character of mixed use and multi-family and as is shown in the map on the left-hand side of your screen, you can see the area that's shaded there, the yellow dash circle. Second, the plan's growth framework map, the opportunity to recommend as the general area described above, continue to improve housing and neighborhood amenities to encourage students, residents, and residential building types. That's the map and then again, the subject that gets indicated on the right-hand side of the screen. And thirdly, the city's future land use map or land manager plan identifies the properties to be rezoned as residential mixed use and the development technologies generally committed to being in said district include two-family dwellings, multi-family dwellings, civic institutional, commercial office, and open space. The land manager plan also sets four blood and principles that describe the intent about how and where growth and development or enclosures occur. And the proposed zoning map amendment appears to be consistent with the following principles listed in your package, which includes encouraging incremental house size, architectural infill of existing residential neighborhoods, as well as number three, increase opportunities to develop diverse housing options, their schools, parks, shopping centers, and employment centers. Additionally, the proposed amendment would help facilitate the development of a missing middle housing in the community, which is identified as a priority in the land manager plan and is specifically referenced in the action item below or the recommendation of the neighborhood and housing 1-1, where it says encourage mixed use and mixed income neighborhoods and housing developments throughout modern town. That will conclude staff's report.
Okay, justice center?
David Biafora, Richard Biafora with Metro Towers LLC. Proposed rezoning purpose will be used for 24 townhouse lots for sale. These townhouses? Twenty-seven, yeah. These townhouse lots were between, between $282 and $300,000 home sales, so looking at around seven million or more in, in, in sales in total. We're viewing this as a pretty good next step from connecting a newly developed downtown into Sunnyside with a very obviously developed Suncrest area by the stadium and what is a developing mill section there between what is Metro Towers and pretty much the stadium where the law school would be, the next, you know, most newly developed area in there, as well as providing clean, safe, reasonably affordable housing to own for law students, med students, or just professionals in the area that is different than the typical rental that connects that gap between downtown and Suncrest up by the stadium.
This is the next generation. My son is back here, my nephew, Richard, and other nephew. So, it's good to see you again, Pete Bill. Been a long time. We're back, as you know, we're working on East End Village, but it's been a long time. My brother and I have sold to the kids in the family trust and, and still love our town. Still going to fight for it, but this was something neat. We didn't need more apartments over there, Metro Towers and what they've done is doing well, but we needed some sales and rentals and, you know, they had a great development with Hartland, one of the fastest developments in Hartland's company, 68 homes in 25 months. I talked to Jeff Arnett today, he was amazed, he said Hartland's the best one. Hartland also did behind, by the Magical Forest or whatever, Dorsey. They actually will be the ones here. If the Magical Forest works, this will work. They just finished up 45 townhomes on the edge of town. It's towards town where there's what, three available? They're $295. They're not going to probably build these. We have quite a few other projects that they are. I'm still young and still at it and loving it, so my brother didn't want anything to do with these, work with them. But I think this will be a nice, I think Scott Copen worked with Ricky in here and I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We put all the land together around there and it's kind of really the best thing we could put in there to make it work.
Okay. Any other? Anybody have any questions for the position?
I have one question. The, the other properties that are, I assume are going to stay office institutional district that's not in control of?
The, the, the long history that in 1968, they started to build dormitory there, 1970, 71, they built a second dormitory there. That was always a multi-family. The Warner family, Warner group ended up in '46 taking it over, whatever, in the 90s, late 90s, and in the late, late 2000s. They had switched it to Grand Central Station, making it an office building.
But the Metro Towers has their control?
Metro Towers is really a apartment. It's still zoned, I have it correct. Metro Towers is still zoned. That's why they're switching. And, and when I dealt with Chris Fletcher back in the day, back in '12, '13, '14, they wanted to change it then. He just said, we asked for a variance to do Metro Towers, we put the units in there and left it alone. And now we finished acquiring everything around there rather than apartments, the smart thing to do was to put it to the zone that it should be, or what you all think it should be.
Thank you.
I think what he's getting at, on this map, what's shaded in blue, you all do not own, you don't control?
No, everything we're working, we build on every inch and use every inch the way, so we're, you know, it's, we're just in the red and.
Okay.
Is that what? Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
You're too excited, Dan.
It's great to be back, it's been a long time. In the background.
Is, is the access for up here going to be the Evans Street?
It will not connect to Metro, it's completely separate. The owners will be individual owners and, you know, we've raised heck for years about having townhouses in Morton Town. Again, it's a great thing, we went to do it over Burr's Place, ended up doing, you know, the housing development behind Burr's Place, but the townhouses, I think came out beautiful on Dorsey. I mean, they did a hell of a job and they should find us something else, so.
And it will connect through?
Yeah, it will link through, fire trucks and all that. Be a nice improvement.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for the planner?
I'd like to know if anything like a planned unit district was discussed for this rather than just the, the straight zoning that they requested?
It was not.
I would have liked that. I, yeah.
Any member of the audience that likes to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Okay, now we'll do this.
I really would have liked to have seen, I think this is a prime opportunity to do the PUD so that we could be more creative with the layout and the design. I think nine acres in an area of town like this is a missed opportunity to do that because I, I think that it would allow staff the ability to make sure things connect a little bit better and, you know, see, you know, what other options may be available. We've got these, now we've got these small adjacent blue lots, you know, that are a separate zoning district and, you know, separate, it's going to be hard to do something to integrate with that. And I agree that we do need to address the missing, missing middle piece to bring townhomes and things like that, but also we have to think about homes that are affordable for those who actually live in the community. And I think that 27 houses dropped down in here without some thoughtful design would be a misstep.
Any other discussion?
So, if I may just address some of those, those concerns of, well, so we, staff has reserved a review of conceptual plans at this point. There is no active site plan, obviously pending. And if one does come with a number of units provided, they were required to do a development of significant impact, so that project would come back to Planning Commission for full review and vetting the scale of the project and the potential roadway connections in that area. Also, looking at just in terms of the surrounding zoning, I'm not sure, and the applicant kind addressed why that was maybe an OI district by itself for such a long time, but the proposed zoning is consistent with not only the adjacent properties, but with what the comp plan was looking at.
Thank you.
And has anybody ever contacted these other property owners around that that are still in blue to talk about potential zoning?
No, but that was staff's intention to try to clean that up over time. That obviously didn't come in with the petitioner's application and given the time constraints that we're under, we weren't able to do that for this, but we would look to do that in the future.
Good.
We did, there was a note and that's a little bit, there's an inaccuracy on the map itself. The case where that property was subdivided here and conveying to Metro Towers, that's actually R3 now that was rezoned and consolidated with the adjoining, so that, that one triangular piece has been cleaned up per the planning commission's previous recommendation.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I have one question. What is on the property now, David? What's it?
Yeah, it is written, thank you for asking a question here. It isn't really nine acres.
I know, I know you're loud.
It, it isn't really nine acres. It's nine acres or 10 acre. If the piece that we have is, what is it, 1.9? It's, it's, it's just a bunch of leftover lots that houses were. So, that was, I, I like the planned unit developments, I like, you know, what we're going to do over at East End Village and, you know, there is a couple of lots here that we're going to put a recreation, we're going to have a dog park in one spot and either pickleball, volleyball, basketball, something on another lot along, I don't even know what that street, they got a little side street there along University Avenue, by Lot 13 there. So, that Lot 13 won't have anything on it. Basically, what will be built on would be, even though it's all those, 13 would be, be that and then all of this would be the townhouses here. And this all inside here is all parking. We're not losing any parking, we can't lose any, and we don't want either or traffic both ways. So, we're only combining a system of a few acres on that. Answer your question here.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Dan.
Mr. President, just for discussing purposes, I agree completely with Mr. Se, but I just want to say that, you know, that going to a, a different zoning that allow more housing, I think will meet the goals of the, of the future land use map and the comprehensive plan. So, I, I think it's a good, whether, it could have been, or could be a missed opportunity, but considering that it's only about one, two acres at the most, it's really going to be redeveloped, this will start marching to meet the, the future land use map and our intent of, of where the comprehensive plan is going. So, I, I find that this does meet the intent of, of the comprehensive plan.
And I hear what you're saying and I understand that it's not quite, it's not nine acres, but since you do, it is single ownership, that's a good opportunity too, to think about how to integrate it better than some of these disjointed developments that we end up. And I hear what you're saying also, that it's going to connect, but I, you know, it is still a good opportunity with single ownership.
Any other discussion? Any kind of motion?
We didn't have staff recommendation.
Oh, yeah, it's not very clear, let's do that.
We had the vote here, right?
Yeah.
So, after review, staff finds the proposed zoning map amendment to be consistent with the 2023 comprehensive plan and staff recommends the full zoning map amendment as requested.
Okay, neither one?
Did you ask? Second, I was waiting for, I'm second.
Motion second, all in favor? You want to pose? Okay, next item on the agenda is SUV 24-129, University Church, Brooklyn, North.
Okay, and the applicant is here, the applicant seeks to acquire approximately 27,000 square feet of land from the church located at 429 Warwick Street. In doing so, the applicant plans to consolidate this 25 by 110 portion of land with existing properties at 417 Ward. And you can see up on the screen, the parcel to be subdivided is identified in green, green hash marks, the yellow area is what's going to be subdivided and conveyed to parcel 55.1, which is shown here. Upon review, the proposed minor subdivision and consolidation of property will result in two new parcels of land that are compliant with the minimum lot provisions in section 133503 of the city's planning and zoning code. Note, the minimum lot size requirement of 3,500 square feet will be met and the minimum lot perimeter requirement of 30 feet will be met. And then this just illustrates again, the applicant also provided another updated plaque. And then this just illustrates, again, the applicant also provided another updated plaque, so we'll walk through those here. This was the original plaque that was submitted to us, it showed in the green, again, the property as it stands now. The yellow area here is shaded as to be subdivided, and then be conveyed and consolidated with the area highlighted in blue.
Any other petition here?
Yes.
Would you like to add anything?
Well, I don't think so, just, you know, we moved in a couple, I guess, two years ago, and discovered that part of our driveway was on our neighbor's, on the church's lot. We've been just trying to make sure that, you know, in the future, if they decide to go anywhere themselves, then we have our driveway.
That makes sense.
Any questions?
So the church is there instead?
Yeah, yes.
That's the only question I had, is.
We hope so.
Okay. I got you.
Okay, I'm Susan Mesut Williams, trustee of the Unitary and Universalist Fellowship of Morgantown. And all I think I need to say is that the consensus of the congregation is that this is a good thing to do, and we're perfectly willing. And I don't know if there's anything more, unless you want me to personally sign a copy of the letter or something like that?
No.
I would say, Mr. Britton, it might be, it might be, if you, in fact, if you get this letter that is dressed with, it's not signed, if you, in fact, wrote this letter, if you can attest to that, it might be helpful.
We'll write it down.
That works too. That works too.
I'm Jim Williams, I'm her husband. I was on the planning commission and chairman for about 10 years, and I hope this works perfectly. It doesn't affect any use we're making of the land as a church, it's just a scratch to have.
So you want to sit here for a while? You want to come back and sit here for a while?
I'm Mrs. Peck.
Same, same, who do you refer?
Well, I was in Massachusetts in Peck, hey.
Same here.
Same, same with that.
That is them?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so, anybody have any questions for the petition?
No.
Okay, any member, although we've already done it, any member in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the petition? I think what we just kept there is a public hearing in favor of the petition. Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Okay, staff recommendations, please.
Staff recommends approval of the subdivision lot consolidation based on the conditions listed in your package, as well as one of the items that was discovered during additional review. If you look here in the area in the corner, the Beaver Street and the private drive to the church right now is partially, it looks like, on the, of the lot to be consolidated. So an additional fourth recommendation would be that the applicant draft or grant the residual property, which is parcel 41.1, an easement to traverse the property so that they could have full access and use the drive that's there now. And that applicant was not made aware of that. Staff did more review before the meeting and made that additional recommendation.
I almost wish it would be closed, staff, but it's not.
No, it's not. Fair enough, thank you, sir.
Okay, so we have an additional recommendation. Any discussion?
Mr. President, can I have one question of staff?
Ricky, I did see on the city's, just looking at the roads, that it looked like, I assume it's the interstate here, that looked like it did go on the property. Did you guys see that one you're in? Does that kind of cover, the last condition that you were talking about, kind of cover that?
Yes, I checked with the public works department. They are not aware of there being a public access road, and I didn't see anything deep work that would show that it was a public freeway.
Perfect, great, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion to forward it to council with the four recommendations from staff. This doesn't.
This doesn't go to council.
Oh, that's right, I forgot. I make a motion to approve, I forgot about that, with your four recommendations.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? That's your answer? Okay. Next item, committee reports. Nope, no comments?
No, I hope everybody's having a good time.
Excellent.
It's going by fast.
It's going by fast.
Director Jaeger, I will be absent from the next planning commission meeting. I will be in Huntington attending the West Virginia Municipal League Conference.
Okay.
Eight, August 8th.
Yes, sir.
You know, I have to get Charles in that asshole. You're lucky. Okay, anything for the other question?
Move to adjourn?
Okay. Thank you all.
I got a question.